I'm going to call the order, the regular meeting for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for January 26, 2021. It is 10:00 a.m. and with that, Mr. Manager, would you lead us in a salute to the flag this morning?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Von Hartung is absent. Alexis Hill?
Here.
Kitty Jung on the phone?
Right there.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. David Watzvial via Zoom, District Attorney. And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item three, sir.
Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, will you call public comment?
Present in chambers, we have first up Ms. Suzie Howell.
Ms. Howell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Suzie Howell. I've been to probably the last three or four of these meetings and kind of appalled at the way you folks treat the people that you work for. Why is there no dialogue? We've heard that you're not allowed to talk to us, you're not allowed to talk to each other. We've since found out that's not true. And I still have yet to see what your science is behind this. I've never had, we've never been able to have a dialogue about the whys of this, you know, lunacy. You all sit here with your big fat salaries and pretty much treat us like the plebes that you, I'm assuming, think we are. Trying to hold on to my temper because I'm really unhappy. There's nothing forthcoming from any of you other than, hmm, I don't know. Maybe we could talk to Sisalak. That's not good enough. And, you know, you've got your big salaries and there's people across this whole state that are withering and dying, yet you won't step out of your box. That looks at the real science, not the science that you don't even know what it is. And lastly, I, I just wonder how any of you can sleep at night. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Cindy Martinez.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, good morning. Commissioner Herman, I understand that you did a couple of things in support of your constituency. One was sending a letter to the governor and asking him to reconsider our position in Washoe County to reopen businesses. Thank you for that. I also understand, I received an email from Janine Hansen's group about a resolution that she drafted that was similar in scope to that which was drafted for the rural counties. Thank you for doing that. That was courageous. And Chair Lucy, respectfully, sir, I must ask, why did you refuse to put that on the agenda for review and discussion? My curiosity about that is, other counties are open, Elko's open, Ely is open, Lyon is on course to be open, Eureka is working on being open, Nye is working on being open. That tells me that there are county commissioners that understand their accountability and the responsibility to their respective constituencies. So I'm wondering, what are you afraid of? Why won't you open up the data that you're using to enforce these unlawful closures? Why won't you open them up for those of us in Washoe County? Why won't you open them up and show us what you're using to keep us shut down? Since the last time I was here, I've gone out and I've talked to a number of different businesses. And universally, workers, owners, managers consistently express a fear of their government. Consistently. Now, I think that there's a saying somewhere in history that says when the people fear, or when the people fear government, there is tyranny. And when the government fears the people, there is freedom. And I think what we're seeing right now, at least for me, what's happened in 2020 is the curtain has not only been swept back from the corruptocrats and what they've done to squelch dissent and impose unlawful edicts on the people, but for me, the curtain has been permanently torn down. And as a former government worker who had great respect for my responsibility to the citizenry, I'm deeply, deeply saddened that some people in our government seem to fail to understand their responsibility to we the people. So respectfully, Chair Lucy, I would ask, what are you afraid of? What information do you have that you don't want us to see? And understand, when I ask questions, I already know the answers. That's been what investigators about. So you have an opportunity, Commissioners, those that are here and not here, to get ahead of the truth coming out. Other counties are taking positive action to free their people. And I respectfully request that you evaluate the information and do the same for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Next up, we have Ms. Darla Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Morning, Darla Lee, for the record. I'd like to echo Ms. Martinez's comments. I would like to thank Commissioner Herman for trying to get something that's very needed on the agenda. And I'm very sorry that it was rejected. And I too do not understand why that would be and why someone has the, something that constituents would very desperately like to have before the public forum and have the ability to comment on. The, the fact is that you are, obviously have to be aware that people are hurting not only in this county but throughout the state because of the lockdowns, which have already been study after study have shown are not effective. I understand that even California is under pressure to open up. So what is matter with Nevada? And that is definitely a problem, not only in the communication between the people and the people that are, that are supposed to be serving us. So I would just say that we have got to have some kind of, of communication between us. And if that is totally being shut down too, then we certainly have a very desperate problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Next up, we have Ms. Patricia Toon.
All right. Ms. Toon?
Good morning. My name is Patricia Toon. I'm a registered nurse and a registered voter. We understand that there was a resolution similar to this that was submitted by the board and was rejected. We would like to know why that was. So this resolution, a resolution in support of the local economy and business of Eureka County packed by COVID-19 restrictions, including requests for relief said, of said restrictions. Our founding fathers recognized that abuses inherent with a totalitarian government and drafted two of the most sacred documents in history, the Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution, to limit the government's power and to clearly define and protect the God-given rights we enjoy as Americans. It has been incredibly difficult to get in front of you all. I don't even feel like I'm in America. I am just blown away by the security. I have no idea. I, it just blows my mind. Eureka County Commissioners has sworn to support, protect, and defend the Constitution. And Nevada Governor Steve Sisalak has sworn the same oath. On March 12, 2020, the governor issued a declaration of emergency to facilitate the state's response to the COVID-19 extended the current statewide pause. Despite record cases of COVID being recorded and no obvious data to support the notion that continued restrictions are having a desired impact on controlling the disease, I will say that hospitals are not full. I have nursing friends that have lost their jobs because the census is so low, they are out of work. The Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution declares, no state shall make or enforce any laws which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States. And the government, governor unilaterally bypassed Nevada legislature by creating de facto law with his directives and claiming the right to do so under authority of emergency powers extended for over 10 months. The governor also deemed it within his power and discretion to classify many businesses as nonessential despite many of these businesses being substantially the same as others as he classified as essential. Seems to be discrepancy there. And we assert that the governor's order that our businesses be restricted 25% capacity violates our Fifth Amendment right that declares, no citizen shall be deprived of his property without due process of law. I will submit a copy of this to the board. I appreciate your consideration. We are all watching to see how things go as we've had no conversations, no resolution, and we're at a year for the two-week lockdown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, right over there to the clerk.
Next up, we have Ms. Barb Mathers.
Welcome, Ms. Mathers.
Thanks. My name is Barb Mathers. I'm a resident of Northern Nevada. I've literally lived here my entire life. I have never been more ashamed of my state than I am today under the reign of Sisalak and leaders like you, literally ashamed of my state. I'd like to know how you guys sleep at night. Destroying lives, destroying livelihoods, destroying small businesses, driving children to suicide. I have a third grader. I opted to homeschool him because I did not want him to go to school in a prison where he had to wear a mask eight hours a day and not be able to play with the kids on the playground and use the playground equipment and run around in grass area that's this large.
Ms. Mathers?
Yeah, I can't breathe. Sorry, I don't really feel like passing out.
Well, there's a rule. I'm sorry.
He is homeschooling at home because he cannot go to school. And he's an extrovert. He needs to be with friends. He needs to be with people all day, every day. And I've lost count of how many tantrums he's had because he's not getting that activity with friends and other children his age. He has friends who have committed suicide. I personally know children who have committed suicide because they are in such an awful school situation. This is ridiculous. You are literally sacrificing our children and not allowing them to go to school and have a regular education. And I have to work from home. My husband works at Costco and he does not make enough to be able to take care of our family. I flip furniture. Guess how hard it is to flip furniture and homeschool my child at the same time? I also have a four-year-old. She gets into my power tools. Guess how easy that is to homeschool my nine-year-old, flip furniture, and also take care of my four-year-old? I'm literally at the end of my rope. I am here to represent other homeschool moms, other moms who are working from home and are literally at the end of our rope. I'm looking at you. I know that Jeanne submitted a resolution and I would like, thanks for turning the mic off or down. I would like to know why you didn't submit it. Nye County is working on this. White Pine County has opened. Washoe County needs to open. You can't continue to use these mask mandates and force us to wear masks on our faces. I don't want to go to the supermarket anymore and know I'm going to be attacked because I can't wear a mask. I don't want my child to not be able to go to school because he can't wear a mask. You guys need to wake up, you need to open back up, get rid of the mask mandates, and listen to your constituents. Listen to the people who are here. We're sick of it, we're done, and this needs to be finished. The virus is a virus. It's going to be around. We're not going to get rid of it. So you need to let us make decisions for ourselves, not force us to wear masks, open schools back up, open the states back up, and allow small businesses to be open. Shame on you for not listening to your constituents.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Victoria Meyer.
Ms. Meyer.
Good morning. Victoria Meyer here. I want to know why Commissioner Herman put forth an item to be on the agenda and it was turned down, and I want to know why. A resolution in support of the local economy and businesses impacted by COVID-19 restrictions, including requests for a reduction of said restrictions to protect local businesses. You all have a copy of this or should have. Whereas, America was founded as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And whereas our founding fathers recognized the abuses inherent with a totalitarian government and drafted two of the most sacred documents of all time, the Declaration of Independence and U.S. Constitution, to limit the government's power and to clearly define and protect the God-given rights we as Americans enjoy. And whereas, we as Washoe County Commissioners have sworn to support, protect, and defend that Constitution. And whereas Nevada Governor Steve Sisalak has sworn exactly the same oath. Whereas Nevada Governor Steve Sisalak's order limiting the capacity of churches and the size of our family gatherings violates our First Amendment rights to the free exercise of our religious and, and our right to peaceably assemble. And whereas Nevada Governor Steve Sisalak's order that our businesses be restricted to 25% capacity violates our Fifth Amendment right that declares, no citizen shall be deprived of his property, quote, "without the due process of law." And whereas, the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution says, quote, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States." And whereas, it has been recognized throughout our history that our constitutional rights will only be good for as long as we stand up for them. And we are here to stand up for them. Whereas, U.S. Attorney General William Barr publicly stated last summer that there is no pandemic exception to our constitutional rights. And whereas Nevada Sisalak, Governor Sisalak is usurping the role of the Nevada legislature by creating law with his directives and claiming the right to do so under the authority of, quote, "emergency powers," even though the pandemic has been with us for nearly a year and the legislature has met twice. And whereas, initial expert predictions were that the COVID case fatality rate would be 3% to 5%, and the actual fatality rate is less than one-half of 1%. Whereas Nevada Governor Sisalak's initial directives were intended to flatten the curve and prevent Nevada's hospitals and other healthcare facilities from being overwhelmed. And the directives have no effect on slowing the virus.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Mr. Bruce Foster is next.
Ms. Foster? Mr. Foster? Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment here. And I am coming from a direction of the food service hospitality industry in which I was involved with for 35 years here in Northern Nevada. And we all know what the COVID tyranny has done to the industry. I mostly did business with the gaming industry here in Northern Nevada and since 1980. And I wish to again appreciate those that have responded to all my emails. Jeanne, thank you. And I wish to say that I'm disheartened of those that never responded after three emails. And I thought that it was all about we the people, that for some reason, based upon our Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the way that our structure was formed, that we hired you to do the job of the people. Today, we're going to primarily talk about the Great Barrington Declaration. And I'm sure that we've all heard of it. The Great Barrington Declaration, an infectious disease epidemiologist and public health scientist. We have grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policies and recommend an approach we call focused protection. And we call the side effects the death and despair issue. Coming from both the left and the right and around the world, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term public health. And then you probably have read the article about Clark County. There's been over 18 suicides on public school children and the suicide hotline has just been burned up. The results include lower childhood vaccination rates, worsening cardiovascular disease outcome, fewer cancer screenings, deteriorating mental health, leading to greater excess mortality in years to come. With the working class and younger members of society carrying the heaviest burden, keeping students out of school is a grave injustice. But my sense, due to time, I would really implore you to take a look at the Barrington, Barrington Declaration and recognize that it's all about this COVID tyranny and was all about the political nature of this period of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Nicholas St. John.
Welcome, Mr. St. John.
Thank you, Commissioners. Addressing the same things that the rest, get this up here. The rest of the patriots have been addressing, we would like to know why the resolution that Commissioner Jeanne Herman submitted to the board, why it wasn't put on the agenda for discussion. I'm not sure how we get that answer. If someone can help me somewhere along the lines of figuring that out, we'd appreciate it. I have here the Washoe County Strategic Plan. And the mission that is stated from your website is that working together regionally to provide and sustain a safe and secure and healthy community. Some of the statistics on health is that the, this pandemic, they continue to put forth numbers, and these are from the CDC, that for those zero to 20, the recovery rate is 99.997%.
Mr. St. John, if you please wear your mask. If you can't wear your mask, we'll provide one for you, sir. Thank you.
Is 99.97, 99.997%. The 99.97% means the recovery rate of, from this, for people under 20, which is all the children, is less than the flu. So all of the restrictions that are placed on our children need to seriously be looked at to, to be lifted. We need to get the schools back open. There's plenty of studies out so that we can't end up getting the children out of what he talked about before of having people, suicide rates, the psychological damage and all that stuff that's going on really needs to be addressed. We'd like to know from the board what you're going to do to address that. We are demanding a public hearing so that there can be discussion with everyone on how we can address this. There is a document from Regional, I'm sorry, Rational Ground that has a very clear succinct path and things to discuss, 10 things that we can discuss. I will give a copy of that to the clerk when I'm done here. So I appreciate your time. But again, we're looking forward to an open dialogue. And we want to find out how we can get that dialogue started. So we're demanding a public hearing so that people here in our county, they're experts. We've got doctors that we're working with and everything that have, have developed strategies and treatments that are successful. So my final question is, from every Commissioner, are you interested in presenting a succinct treatment for COVID-19? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
Ms. Melanie Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
I am a stay-at-home mom and I'm also, just like Barb, homeschooling my children because I will not allow my children to be at school eight hours a day wearing a mask, breathing their own CO2 and not their oxygen. I have a 16-year-old, almost 17, that's a junior in high school, who has, who is all honors classes. And I'm having to homeschool him and I've never learned how to do Common Core, which they learned. I have a 15-year-old son as well, who's in eighth grade. And then I have an eight-year-old daughter, who I'm also having to homeschool. Three children, all different grades. I do realize that, well, we understand that a resolution was submitted and denied. White Pine, common to White Pine. Whereas Nevada revised statutes provided that the Board of County Commissioners serving the County Board of Health is charged, sorry, I'm nervous, charged with the duty to adopt, adapt such regulations as may be necessary for the prevention and control and any contagious and infectious disease dangerous to the public health. Whereas both United States Constitution and Nevada Constitution prohibit infringement on religious liberty and unlawful searches and seizures. Whereas the governor of the state of Nevada first declared a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 12, 2020 and began issuing emergency directives within days thereafter. Whereas despite the Nevada legislative ability to pass laws and regulations addressing the COVID-19 pandemic on behalf of the constituents, the governor instead continues to legislate the state's COVID-19 response himself through his emergency directives. And we are demanding a public hearing and I would like to submit a copy of White Pine's resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Next up, we have Ms. Kelsey Schroder.
Ms. Schroder.
Hello.
Ms. Schroder.
Um, I just would like to start by bringing to your attention that on the 20th, the WHO had changed their guidance on the PCR testings on the 20th. They now have, they now have state, a positive result is not itself an indication of infection of COVID-19 and that a second test along with a clinical diagnosis is required. I feel that the numbers have been inflated. I feel that we are suffering. My children, who are three and five, have lost their father due to alcohol and drugs. I have lost another friend due to a drug overdose. People are completely suffering. And I personally had gotten COVID-19. I cured it holistically and I am still required to wear a mask. So there's just so many things that are not making sense, not adding up. This is going on way too long. And the fact that the community is having such a huge drug and alcohol and families are falling apart is just really terrible. So we are asking for a public resolution. And I just really hope that you guys realize that there's a lot happening to families.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one Zoom speaker. And while that's getting ready, I will place on the record, we have emails from Ann Sweeter, Tom Morris, Klaus Kolberg, and Kay Mowen, and two voicemails, one from Tom Morris and an anonymous caller. So we're ready for Ann Marie Grant on Zoom.
All right. Ms. Grant, can you hear us? All right. Ms. Grant, can you hear us?
I hadn't committed any crime. I begged for them to get him to the hospital and they said that they couldn't. He had never been in jail his whole life for anything ever. Another commenter, I had a seizure. I was sitting there and felt it coming. So I started walking up to the desk and one of the officers made me stop. And when I said I felt like I was going to seize up, she told me to sit my blank back down and wait for medical. I did, and when they called me over, I sat down and was leaning on the counter for support and they asked me questions. I had a real long horrible seizure. I woke up to an officer telling me I was fine and to knock it off. They gave me a Dixie cup of watered-down Gatorade and sent me back to my seat where I sat for another twelve hours waiting to get released. Then a few hours before I was released, they indeed were making fun of inmates' pictures, calling names. It was horrible. One, I will never forget, that blank, that monkey slapped her blank boyfriend. It's a horrible place and I hope to never go back. I have a million things I could say about the two times I had spent there, but it would take all night to write about it. Shouldn't be shocked by that, given my brother was murdered up there. It's clear you don't care about the livelihood or the life of humans who live in your county because you all have a duty under NRS to eleven point zero two zero, even though some of you think it's old and outdated and doesn't apply. Well, it's on the books, so follow it. I'll leave you with my brother being murdered at the jail.
Next up, we have Dan Purdy on Zoom.
All right. Mr. Purdy.
Good morning. Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy, murdered at Washoe County Jail. It's interesting listening to your voters today. I've been saying this for years now. You could care less about your own voters. You have someone that wants to put something on the agenda so that the public can have an open discussion. But other members of the board said, no, we don't want to discuss that. We just want to sweep things under the rug. I suggest to the fellow community members and voters to vote you out and run for office themselves. Then you guys may find some change. It can happen out there. The same people sitting on the board time and time again. And you elect to do absolutely nothing, especially when it comes to the jail. I receive letters from inmates. I'm in contact with them. They talk about the malnutrition, the verbal and mental abuse. But every time you guys open your mouth, you talk about how great it is up at the jail. That's absolutely obscene. All you guys care about is your next elections and your families. You don't care about your fellow man, your fellow citizen. All you do is think about yourselves. I'd say have a great day, but as you know, I wouldn't mean it.
There is nobody else signed in.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. We are on to item four, Mr. Manager.
Announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything to start this morning?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things. Number one, the, for the department heads that may be watching the meeting, just want to encourage you to watch the weather and do the appropriate thing with your employees over the next couple of days as conditions develop. And if you have any questions about what you should do, please feel free to check in with my office. Number two, Mr. Chair, we're going to pull item six E1 at the request of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. There was a problem with the agreement at the last minute, so we won't need to hear that one today. Number three, some of the Commissioners, or all of the Commissioners, may have received inquiries about homeless shelter availability during these very cold conditions. I, I just want to confirm, for all of you, I've checked with the other jurisdictions over the last couple of days. And there is capacity. There are available beds. So we, we are following up to make sure that that's understood and that folks get taken care of as they need to. And then lastly, Mr. Chair, with regards to COVID-19 vaccines, as I did last week, I want to encourage the public. If you want, if you need information on where you are in the priority list or how you can sign up, please visit the website covid19washoe.com. And if you go to that site, it has information on the, the state's playbook in terms of, of the COVID vaccination plan. It also allows you to fill out the survey that will determine where you are in the, in the, in the priority waiting list. And that also enables you to receive communication from the Health District when it is your turn to be vaccinated. So again, it's covid19washoe.com. We continue here in northern Nevada to dispense virtually all of the vaccine that we receive as has been much documented around the country and is certainly true here in the state of Nevada. We simply aren't getting the quantities of vaccine that we need. We have worked with the jurisdictions, in particular Truckee Meadows, Reno and Sparks Fire, as well as up in Incline. All of those agencies have ample capacity to provide more vaccine if we had it available. Right now, we are following the Governor's playbook and focusing on elderly citizens, those over seventy, and as well as the essential workers. And right now, the focus of those actions is the Washoe County School District to get the teachers and staff and other childcare professionals taken care of. So that's my update, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share that again. Anybody needs information, covid19washoe.com.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to compliment you folks that came here to make use of your public speaking time. And I, I hear you. And I will, I will continue to try to get some help for you and relieve this curse that's on you right now. I even have a pile of letters that people have written trying, you know, to tell me that, hey, we need to look at the situation. It's serious. And don't give up. Trust in God. We'll get there. And I won't quit working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right. Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two things for the board. We had a Tahoe Transportation District meeting on Friday. And we are moving forward with community input sessions on where and what a bus hub would look like in Incline Village, Crystal Bay. Those will be February eleventh and twelfth, as well as eighteenth and nineteenth. The details, we will, I can get out to constituents who have any questions. I'd also like to ask for a future agenda item to get Incline Village and Crystal Bay some real community planning, specifically on traffic, parking, speeding in neighborhoods, multi-modal planning, and true community visioning. So I'm asking for a next agenda item to see what that would cost for a consultant and how, how we can best serve those needs. Because you'll hear later on the agenda that we have the Tahoe area plan and there's concerns about community input with that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I do appreciate. I do appreciate those comments this morning. Commissioner Jung has replied and she has nothing to add this morning. So I would like to address all of the public comment this morning in regards to all of you that have come and participated and been here this morning. And I appreciate you driving out on a snowy morning to do that. You were correct. I did not place the agenda item for the resolution and I will explain to you why. Commissioner Herman and I discussed a resolution and a letter. At that time, she has not requested a resolution to me directly. I have not seen a resolution from her. She had submitted a letter to the Governor. But as I, as I professed the last time at the last meeting I sat, we had here in public, I explained that a resolution will not make a difference in regards to where Governor Sisalak sits on this issue. Washoe County does not oversee Washoe County School District. Washoe County does not oversee the students. Washoe County does not oversee the Health District. We are members of said entities. We oversee public, you know, our twenty-four departments, which are the Roads Department, Animal Services, a number of other things you can find on our website. However, I cannot dictate whether or not the mask rule goes away. That is not in my power. That is not in this board's power. Even if this board takes a resolution on it, wouldn't change it. And I can tell you, I can also attest to you that a majority of our citizens live within the city of Sparks and city of Reno, along with their businesses. Those businesses are impacted by those governments and those municipalities. For me, if I were to place a resolution on the record and say, well, you know, Washoe County is not going to enforce these types of, if that was even to pass by this board. But if it was to pass by this board and that Washoe County was not going to enforce those rules, it would only be in the unincorporated area of Washoe County. So if you reside in the city of Reno, reside in the city of Sparks, if you have a business in the city of Reno or a business in the city of Sparks, you would still fall under their rules. And their, their police enforcement, it has nothing to do with Washoe County. I appreciate that Elko County, I appreciate that Nye County, or I'm sorry, White Pine, Elko, and now as of today, Eureka County, have placed resolutions on their agenda. Very much different counties than right here in Washoe County. And I'm very sorry. And I, I sit here and I, I know you're upset and you're fighting for it. And I, there's, I want to help you, but a resolution is not going to change the outcome of a mask mandate from the Governor. It's just not. And, you know, that is the God's honest truth. And if, you know, if that's not something you want to hear, I apologize. But I'm sitting here in front of you today, telling you that absolutely what you heard from Commissioner Herman is correct. I did not place the agenda on the, on the agenda for that reason alone. So there you go, folks. I'm very sorry about that. As for the public hearing, we will discuss a public hearing. But once again, a public hearing is just the same thing as you have right here. You have the opportunity to come and speak. This is a citizens' government. You're allowed to do so. There were some comments made by some of the, the public speakers that they were not, if you have felt like you were unable to provide comment or participate in the citizens' government, you have every opportunity to make those complaints to the state under open meeting law and Ethics Commission. You can do so at any time. That is your God-given right as a citizen of the state of Nevada. So with that, I will leave you with that. I would also say that for those individuals that are watching or participating remotely, the roads are very dangerous today. We are trying to get our public, our Roads Department and snow crews around to all the neighborhoods within the unincorporated area as quickly as possible. And if, for an update on that, we have, you can go to our website and there is a snowplow tracker. Correct, Mr. Manager, I believe, through our website. If you just type in "snowplow" into the search bar, it'll give you those, that information. With that, I have no further, I have no further comment. And I will ask one more, one last time for everybody. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything? No? Okay. All right. We will close. Item four. And Mr. Manager, we are on to item five. This is donations. So today, Commissioner Hill, will you please read into the record our five, our four donations that we have today? Items five A through five D, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Recommendation to approve a donation of two obsolete golf carts with a current market value estimated at six hundred and twenty-five dollars each, total estimated value of twelve fifty, to Karma Box Project in the need of such equipment for the Build for Zero River-Stewarts Program funded by the Truckee River Fund. And just continue.
Yes, please.
Okay. Recommendation to accept one-time appreciation gift donations, estimated value of sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents from a private, from private citizens to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Recommendation to accept a donation of fourteen, oh gosh, I do not know how to pronounce that word, Omega ICW Level Three rifle plates and Omega ICW Level Three rifle plates, total estimated value of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Washoe County Honorary Deputy Sheriffs Association to be utilized for the safety of deputies in the Operations Bureau. Recommendation to accept a donation of five mobile armored Level Threes shields, estimated at nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Washoe County Honorary Deputy Sheriffs Association to be utilized for the safety of deputies in the Patrol Division.
All right. Thank you very much. I do appreciate all those donations that we have read into the record today. All right. And Mr. Manager, do we, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Seeing no public comment on these, what's that? We do? Sorry, we have a public comment via Zoom.
Okay, we now have Ann Marie Grant via Zoom.
All right.
Ann Marie Grant, yeah, Ann Marie Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno PD and Washoe County Sheriffs. I find it interesting that the Washoe County Sheriff's Office gets all these donations and then these grants. And you let how much of your budget be utilized towards them. It's time to start reconsidering that. And I'm opposed to accepting the donation. You're just militarizing the police against the community. I'm, I mean, how many offices are being shot in Washoe County? Let's be real. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Next up, we have Dan Purdy via Zoom.
Mr. Purdy.
Daniel Purdy, brother of Thomas Purdy, murdered at Washoe County Jail. I would implore you not to accept militarized vehicles, donation or not. The people that are donating these vehicles make political donations to each and every one of you. Absolutely despicable. The community does not want militarized vehicles. It does not make people feel safe. Just like when there's a mental health crisis, people don't want the cars. They want the ambulance. I implore you again not to accept that donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy.
Okay, now we have nobody signed in.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we will bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion to approve the donations.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and I have a second. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If you can please affirm your votes on your screen. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All Commissioners voting. All right. We are on to item six. This is our consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to, I want to make sure that we have, we pulled item six E1 today at the request of the Sheriff's Office. And we'll bring that back at a later time. So with that, does anybody have any further discussion on any of the consent agenda this morning? All right, seeing none. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
We do. On item six B, Mr. Joel Grace.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joel Grace, President of the Great Reno Community Ice Skating Association, for the record. Just wanted to comment on six B. Just wanted to say thank you for actually taking a look at and hopefully approving the fund disbursement for Reno Ice. This was not an easy project. It was six years in working with the county and the city on this as it's in the city sphere of influence, county-owned. Commissioner, I want to really thank Commissioner Lucy, six years ago, for having the vision for this project, as well as Jennifer Budge and Eric Crump. Jennifer is no longer with the county. But really seeing this thing through and it was very difficult, obviously, during COVID and now finally opened and operating through social. during COVID, and now finally opened and operating through social distancing protocols and masks and sanitization, everything. It's been a, been a challenging project, and we would really appreciate your support to help us with the sewer fees on, on this nonprofit project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grace, we appreciate it.
We do have a Zoom caller, Ann Marie Grant.
All right, Ms. Grant, the floor is yours.
Ann Marie Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno Police and Washoe County Sheriffs. My comment is in regards to six E3 and six E4, like I stated previously. It seems the Sheriff's Office gets quite a bit of funding outside the county budget. I think next time you all go over your budget of giving the sheriff hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably millions, I can get the exact dollar, but I would consider, I would strongly urge you to consider that. I mean, obviously, you should accept these grants, it's not going to cost the county any money, but you should take into consideration all the grants they are getting when you allocate for their budget next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
There is no more voice, or, um...
Public comment?
Public comment.
Thank you. Oh, no, it looks like we've got one, we have one more.
Oh, Dan Purdy is there.
All right, Mr. Purdy. Mr. Purdy, you got us? Mr. Purdy, can you unmute?
Whoops.
I got, we got you now, Mr. Purdy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy, murdered at Washoe County Jail. I would just like to reiterate the fact of what Mrs. Grant said. You guys have a nice day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Purdy.
Okay, now, now we have nobody else.
All right, are we good? All right, all right, seeing no further public comment, we'll close that. No further discussion on the consent agenda as posted with the removal of six E1, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Herman.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hill. Any further, just seeing...
Yes, just, I would like to make a comment on sixty. I went and toured the Washoe County Regional Animal Services Building, and I was so impressed with this program. It actually was happening while I was there, and I got to meet the doctor, and I just, it's really exciting how they want to expand this program for the future for folks who are lower income and do a sliding scale fee for spay and neutering, and I, I think they're doing some really innovative services over there, so I just wanted to commend that department.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, I do appreciate that, and they are doing good, I believe that they are doing good work over at the Animal Services. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Herman, second from Commissioner Hill on the consent agenda as posted with the removal of six E1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, so we are on to our regular agenda now. This morning, I would recommend, based on, for everybody's, I want to place a block vote this morning, and I may make a motion to do that, if it's at the will of the board. I'm going to place into block, I mean, in a form of a motion, items seven, eight, and nine this morning, under a block vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for the block vote. All right, Mr. Manager, will you read those items into the record?
Item seven is a recommendation to...
Board a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the STEM Wharf, the Veterans Parkway reclaimed main extension project, PWP-WA-2020-361 project. Staff recommends Reno Tahoe Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,883,965.82, and approve a separate project contingency fund in the amount of $200,000. Item number eight is a recommendation to approve the first addendum to SR28 corridor operations and maintenance in a local agreement between Washoe County, Tahoe Transportation District, Nevada Department of Transportation, Nevada Division of State Parks, Nevada Division of State Lands, Nevada Department of Public Safety, Highway Patrol, Incline Village General Improvement District, Carson City Parks and Recreation Department, Douglas County Parks and Recreation Department, and Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Item number nine is a recommendation to approve an FFY2820, Department of Homeland Security Grant, passed through the State Homeland Security Program, awarding $195,000 with no county match required for, for continuity of operations and continuity of government project, authorize food purchases for planning and training events retroactive from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2022. If approved, authorize the county manager or his designee to sign the grant award documents when received and direct the comptroller's office to make the necessary budget adjustments, amendments.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the, any of the items this morning?
I see nobody signed in for public comment.
All right, do we have anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board, closed public comment on items seven, eight, and nine. Any further discussion on these items? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, so, and Commissioner Herman, were you an aye as well? Yes, okay. So, all those, all commissioners voting, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, please affirm your votes on the screen, thank you. All right, we are on, sorry, it's a little clunky this morning, my iPad isn't running exactly the way it usually does. All right, we are on to item ten, Mr. Manager.
Item ten is a recommendation to review and approve the 2021 Washoe County Legislative Principles, including an update and discussion regarding the 81st, 2021 Session of the Nevada State Legislature with possible direction to staff. And today, Mr. Chair, we have Jamie Rodriguez in chambers.
All right, welcome, Ms. Rodriguez.
Morning, Commission. Wanted to touch base on a couple of things, starting Monday, we will be experiencing our 81st legislative session, which will then go until May 31st. So, wanted to kind of start out with some reminders of the legislative process. We have our, what I kindly refer to as Team Washoe, that is the full-time legislative representative for the county during session. That includes our contract lobbyist, Alfredo Alonso, and the staff over at Lewis and Roca, Jenny Noble from the District Attorney's Office, Jorge Sulfarino and Mary Sarah Kinner from the Sheriff's Office, Kendra Burchi from the Public Defender's Office, and Joelle Gutman-Dutson from the Health District, and want to thank all the numerous staff members back here who help us in reviewing bills, to help us get, make sure we have the most pertinent information as we look at legislation that's being proposed. So, we are going into a new session, this will be a different session with COVID and, and some of those implementate, and those impacts from COVID. So, we, there was a press release, released last week from Brenda Erdos, who's the Director of the Legislative Council Bureau, confirming that the legislative building will be closed, at least in the beginning of the session, working to get staff and legislators vaccinated. Once that has occurred, there will likely be some sort of a hybrid opening of the legislative building for those who are vaccinated, or to make rapid tests available for those who have not been vaccinated. There will be an appointment system to get those tests, or an appointment required to be able to get into the building, so some of those details are still coming. The other important piece of that press release that did come out last week was that there will be changes to the lobbying statute. So, for those of us who are in Carson City, who would normally be in the building, we have to register as lobbyists, and there's a multitude of laws that we have to comply with as registered lobbyists, we have to track our time, there's a report that we have to submit to the Department of Taxation every year, outlining how much the county spends on our lobbying efforts. Because that current statute really states that you have to be in the legislative building, there's going to be some changes to include and adapt to the current, current way by which the session will be handled, so those of us who would be communicating with them via Teams or phone or what have you will have to register. That could have some impacts on some departments, where we maybe have subject, subject matter experts, who legislators frequently call on to ask questions, who previously would not have had to register as a lobbyist, but will have to now, depending on exactly how those changes are addressed within the legislature. So, something we will definitely be keeping an eye on. Also, for testimony of bills, or on bills, there's going to be a system by which we have to register and sign up, that we are, that we are intending to testify on a bill, so we'll be working with staff to make sure that there's clear understanding when we need subject matter experts to be testifying or what have you, that we make sure that they're all signed up properly and are able to participate as we need. The, I think one of the other unknowns for this session, before I kind of get into the priorities here, we are coming out of a census year, which means that we would have redistricting. The information has kind of gone back and forth, so there's a chance that that will be happening during the regular session, and there's a chance that that will be happening in a special session at the conclusion of the regular session. So, those are a couple of key points that I kind of wanted to talk about before we get into the legislative priorities, I think, and understanding too, why we're bringing forward these priorities for your approval. So, you do have in front of you our proposal for legislative principles. We know that this is going to be a difficult year, and so we thought, having better focus for staff and for our lobbying team from the board would be beneficial. So, I was just going to kind of walk through these high level very quickly, to not read through all of this, and then welcome any conversation or questions from the board. So, the first one is respect for governmental roles, and so really the idea of this is making sure that we're working with our regional partners and other local governments, not just cities and counties, but school districts, special districts, the state, all of the governments, to make sure that we're able to best provide services to our constituents. Working on policy, supporting local determination, giving more authority to us as local governments in terms of what policies and decisions we should be able to make at a local government level. And then the last one that I think kind of goes back between this one and the next one is unfunded mandates. Unfunded mandates are something that, as local governments, we always strongly oppose, and this session may be a very difficult one, that's something we'll be watching much more carefully of any potential unfunded mandates that may be proposed through legislation. The second principle is recovery of our economic strength. I really want to make sure that we are supporting economic recovery and development for local governments, specifically Washoe County, looking at long-term solutions and fiscal responsibility. Again, I would say that unfunded mandates probably falls under this one as well, but we thought that one's a little bit more important, so we put it under the first priority. Third priority is regional solutions to service provisions. So, again, looking for intergovernmental collaboration, working with our regional providers, and, and trying to look at things from more of a regional perspective of how we can help each other and support each other to best provide services to our residents. Communications is extremely important, as I mentioned, the full-time lobbyist during the legislative session, but we are always, as always, committed to working with the legislature, communicating with multitude, multiple stakeholders, business partners, and working to achieve any goals for Washoe County during the legislative session. Our legislative communication policy, we have legislative updates, this does include communication with our legislative liaisons. Again, this session, that will be Chair Lucy and Commissioner Hill, as well as our management team, to ensure that we are able to work through and come up with the best direction to staff. Then, we have board direction, there's a standing item on every agenda starting next week, or after next week, there's not a board meeting next week, but to give, ask for direction from the board and allow the board to ask questions, and make sure that you guys have the information that you need to help best provide us with those directions during the Lobbyist authority, again, I, I point that one out a little bit because we don't know exactly what that lobbyist provisions are going to look like yet, so once we have more information, we will be sure that we are communicating that both with you, the board, as well as the departments, since there may be some kind of domino effect of some of I think those are all, those are the high-level points. I'm happy to turn over to the board if there's any specific questions, or if there's any specific items you would like more detail on, or any potential changes to these priorities.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, I do appreciate you coming and presenting this morning. I'm going to go to a public comment first on this item, and then we'll come back for a little bit broader discussion on this. We have Ann Marie Grant, I believe, signed in on Zoom, is that correct?
We do, on Zoom.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Murdy, Purdy, killed by Reno PD and Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I would like to suggest, when you all go to the legislature this year, that Washoe County looks into having a legislatively mandated conviction review board for the Washoe County DA's office. I did request information regarding their conviction integrity committee, and I will let you know that since its inception, they have reviewed zero cases of those convicted who claim they are wrongly convicted. And I would also like you to support a posthumous exoneration legislative bill, because God knows how many have been done dirty by the corruption at the Washoe County DA's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, seeing no further public comment on this, signed in at this time, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Commissioners, any discussion on this? I'm going to kind of, I'll kind of open the discussion. I have been working with Manager Brown and our Legislative Director, Jamie Rodriguez, on a number of these policies and principles. I felt it prudent, because this is going to be such a different year for all of us in regards to, we used to be able to attend in person, that will not be the case this year, so it'll be very difficult to address many of the members during session and have face-to-face conversations with them. So, as it pertains to bills that are introduced on the floor and things that we see very, very rapidly as session changes, we'll need to be prepared to address that. And so, I want to make sure that our management team and our legislative team have those principles from us going into session, because as I said, they're not going to have all the opportunities they once did to speak with these legislators, discuss our positions, discuss how we go. So, it's going to be a little bit more of a proactive game, in the sense that our team needs to get out in front of it as much as they possibly can to have those discussions. Secondly, for everybody who watched the State of the State that was presented by our Governor Sisalak and also his budget proposal, the, one of the biggest discussions this year is going to be the budget. In the legislature, I know a budget hearing started last week, which was basically a kind of a preview of what we will see, whether it's Department of Human Services, or Department of Education, or Roads. Those impacts, as outlined in the policies and the principles here, is come in the way of unfunded mandates very, quite often to counties, and we have to subsidize or fully lift a lot of those issues on our own. So, with those challenges in front of us, defense is always our best opportunity, in my opinion, going into this, to try to identify where these could be, how to minimize any exposure we may have to those, those potential bills and what happens there. So, is there any changes, or anything that anybody would like to say, or, or to the principles or policies that we've brought forward, that were provided to you? So, Commissioner Hill, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Rodriguez, and I think that we're in good hands moving into the session. I would just like to say that, you know, if there are things that the legislature is doing to make the government more transparent, I think, instead of, you know, ensuring that that really is that an unfunded mandate, or is that something that we should be doing in the course of work? So, I think, you know, those kind of things, you know, I think I want to just be careful with on, you know, overreacting, not that I'm saying we've done that in the past, but I've seen other local governments do that, so, and then, I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, seeing what happens, it, it sounds like it's going to be a tough year. It sounds like it's going to be a tough year because of where we are in the budget crisis and where the state is. So I look forward to two years from now, and I know we've been talking about our future plans and how we can work on a regional front to really look at these major issues, our homeless issues, mental health issues, and how we can work with the state on those. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything you'd like to add this morning in regards to legislative? No? Okay. And Commissioner Jung is not signaling that she has anything either. So with that, seeing no further conversation from us, I think you've done a great job compiling some of the direction that we have going into this, and I look forward to what those updates are going to be on future meetings going forward. So we'll see what that looks like when the gavel drops in a week, and we'll come back and see. How often do you think you'll be able to come back and give us a presentation, Ms. Rodriguez? Or have we discussed what that's going to look like physically? Are you going, I mean, are you going to be down in Carson, or are you going to be here? What was that going to be like?
So the plan is for me to be in Carson. So I'm sure it'll be very similar to other years, that we either have Manager Brown, previously as Manager Slaughter, but the manager, or the Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, will be kind of the points to be able to present to the board during our weekly updates. If time allows, then obviously I can definitely participate, but committee schedules and ability to be available to legislators, generally speaking, makes that very difficult for me to be able to participate, whether it's in Zoom or in person. So I think right now, the plan is to kind of keep it the way that it has previously been of having management presenting to the board during the updates.
Great. And then will we be able to, will you be able to compile this year, and I know this is maybe a deep ask, but a bill tracker for us, just a preliminary, once, once we kind of get into session, just kind of a, and then we can kind of get updates so that we know, a little bit of a synopsis on each one of the high-level bills for the commissioners, just in case they have questions, or they want to take a policy direction, or we want to bring it up for our direction with the manager. Will that be available to us?
Yes, absolutely. So at every BCC meeting, you'll be getting a report. The way that we've always kind of had it outlined in the past is, at the top of the report is any new bills that we're asking for direction from the board on, overview of what those bills are, kind of where they are in the process and what have you. After that, we usually have them broken up by bills the board has previously given direction on, so whether that's support or opposition of the bill, and what the status of those bills are. And then we have what we've always kind of had to fall under bills of interest. So that includes a multitude of bills. There's bills that we include in there that we know you guys have particular interest in. I know, Commissioner Hill, you mentioned the homeless, right? So anything that results in that will definitely be in that report, whether it necessarily impacts the county or not. But included in that report as well, or in that section of the report as well, is other bills that definitely will have some sort of impact on the county. And oftentimes, those stay under bills of interest for a period of time while we're negotiating them. It's extremely rare that bills are ever introduced and passed as introduced, and so that we're not getting ourselves in a position of taking positions or directions on bills that are still being negotiated. We want to make sure that we're bringing it to you at the point that we believe the bill will be moving forward, so that we don't get stuck in a position of, it may be poorly written, and we would have to be opposed based on how it was written, but we're able to negotiate that in a different, you know, negotiate that to be something that we would support. So we would wait until it's been negotiated to bring it to you for option of support while those negotiations are happening. So that is a report you'll still get during every BCC meeting.
Great. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion from the commission, looking for a motion to accept the policies and procedures as drafted for the 81st legislative session for the state of Nevada.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion from Commissioner Herman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hill. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Jung? You there? All those opposed?
No.
No, I don't. You got, you there? Are you aye, or?
Aye.
Aye, I hear, I heard an aye here. Okay, so I got Commissioner Jung is an aye, affirmed the vote, so all commissioners voting, the motion passes unanimously. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 11. This is the public hearing. I opened the public hearing. Mr. Manager, take it away.
Item number 11 is a public hearing, excuse me, impossible adoption of resolutions. Adopting the Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 19-007, which is the Tahoe Area Master Plan, amending the Washoe County Master Plan Volume 2 Tahoe Area Plan, including changes to the goals, policies, and maps. If adopted, the Master Plan Amendment will take effect after a determination of conformance with the Tahoe Regional Plan by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 19-007, the Tahoe Regulatory Zone Map, subject to the final approval of the Associated Master Plan Amendment WMPA 19-0007, and the finding of conformance with the 2012 Tahoe Regional Plan to amend the Tahoe Regulatory Zone Map in order to adopt the Tahoe Regional Plan Agency's regulatory zone boundaries. And, if adopted, authorize the chair to sign the resolutions to that effect. If adopted, these amendments will apply to all parcels in the Tahoe Area Plan, which generally encompasses the communities of Crystal Bay and Incline Village in the Lake Tahoe Basin. These amendments are meant to ensure the express conformance of Washoe County's plans with the 2012 Regional Plan, and are generally not intended to increase densities or intensities beyond what is currently permitted by the Regional Plan adopted by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Amendments include, but are not limited to, the following. Adopting TRPA's master plan land use categories in lieu of Washoe County's master plan land use categories set forth in Article 106 of the Washoe County Development Code. Adopting regulatory zones utilizing the boundaries and allowed uses of TRPA's plan area statements and community plans in lieu of Washoe County's regulatory zones not forth, set forth, I'm sorry, in Article 106 of the Washoe County Development Code. Adopting goals and policies of the following TRPA required subjects: land use, transportation, conservation, public services and facilities, recreation, and implementation. Adopting TRPA's implementing plans by reference when necessary, including but not limited to portions of TRPA Code of Ordinances and the Shore Zone Plan, and adopting other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. We do have some public comment. Madam Clerk, being that this is a public hearing, will you please call public comment?
I have received emails from Carol Black, Rhonda Tyser, Diane Hirschberg, Kathy Julian, Gary Bentley, and Gavin Fager that will be placed on the record.
And were those, Madam Clerk, can I ask if those emails were in support or in opposition?
It was a variety.
Okay. But they will be placed on the record.
They will be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. All right. I have, we do have a public comment that is available via Zoom from an, so Christina Hill. Ms. Hill, can you hear us?
Yes, excuse me, yes, I can.
All right, Ms. Hill, the floor is yours, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm a longtime planner in Lake Tahoe and have been part of living in Incline for 30 years and have been part of this process of the Tahoe Area Plan. I'm looking back at my old notes from 2010, when we were meeting on the same thing, but this latest document has some inconsistencies with what was previously reviewed and approved by the community. And that includes increasing infrastructure to support the extensive trails that are proposed in recreational areas, like up the Chief's Flat and the Flume Trail. And, you know, I don't know if you guys ever drive over Mount Rose on a weekend day, but the parking is incredibly intense, and it goes from the summit all the way down to the lookout at, on Highway 431 on both sides of the road. There's clearly too much use of this fragile area already. So any kind of support or added parking lots or hope, an increase in that area, I would be opposed to. Also, there is specifically notification of a transit hub at the old Incline Elementary School, and I am opposed to that, as is much of the community, as hopefully you will read the comments that Rhonda Tyser and others emailed in. I would like those read out loud for the record, so you could hear the opposition to this bus hub that's being proposed. It was never proposed before, but it's part of this new area plan update, and we, many of the community members oppose it. And also, there's several special area overlays that are, one is in my neighborhood. I live in Tyrolean Village, which is a residential area built in the 70s up by Diamond Peak, and there is an overlay that allows for time shares and bed and breakfasts. And there is no public transportation anywhere near our subdivision, and I can't believe that this was an overlay that was adopted in 2004. And I lived in Tyrolean Village at that time and was never made aware that this general plan amendment was being made to my neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
And so, those are my concerns.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We have also, I believe, Randall Fleischer. Is that correct? Mr. Fleischer, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, this is Randall Fleischer. I'm a resident of the plan. I think it's what the City of Incline Village and Crystal Bay need to take the town to the next level. I hope that the county commissioner will adopt the plan as it is proposed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fleischer, for your comments. I have now Ann Nichols. Ms. Nichols, can you hear us?
Are you?
Okay, perfect, Ms. Nichols. We can hear you. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I've lived at Lake Tahoe for 50 years, and I have a nonprofit called the North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. And, you know, it's nine years since the 2012 Regional Plan was adopted, and that is what you're conforming to, but then adding a couple of more dents to this car, because it's very clear that the Regional Plan is not working. We have added traffic and gridlock, and more people, and they've moved here permanently. The schools are overwhelmed, and this plan adds added height and density, and we have not the infrastructure to handle this. And, you know, take it to the next level, boy, our area is at the next level without the capacity to handle it. We are already there. And so I think this, we need new traffic studies that actually talk about what's going on today. So we've got, you know, we're putting 10 pounds in a five-pound bag again, and it's very, the overlays, the bus hub, you know, this needs to all really be considered, and I feel like the community has been left out of this process. And it's just a real shame, because this is, what's happening, of course, is people are just building luxury condos, like Boulder Bay, Million 5 to 22. This was supposed to be a destination resort that would be using public transit. Well, it's 18 condos. So please reconsider this. We need to, you know, just think about capacity and take a break and reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. All right. Is there any further public comment?
I see nobody else signed in.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We do have Eric Young that is on Zoom with planning to provide a presentation for the commissioners, if you would like. All right. So, Mr. Young, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. Mr. Young, you have 10 minutes to provide a presentation to the commission in regards to this item. So can we share Mr. Young's screen? All right. Hold on one second. Eric, we'll get you situated here in just a second.
Your thing.
All right. All right.
Okay.
You're free to go, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission. It's good to be here on this, on this plan. As you'll hear, it's been, it's been a long time in the works. This presentation is intended to cover the next agenda item as well, because the two agenda items taken together are what's often referred to as the Tahoe Area Plan. And this is often, both agenda items together are often referred to as the Tahoe Area Plan Update. So that update is three, requires three separate documents that you'd have to take action on all three. So what we're actually looking at when we, when we refer to something that we call the Tahoe Area Plan is the master plan that you have on this agenda item, the development code, which is the next agenda item. You did the first reading of that back in March. It was the last, the last hearing you had pre-COVID. We did the first reading on that. The second reading is scheduled for the next agenda item, and then the regulatory zone map was also on this agenda item. So those three things together represent the Tahoe Area Plan Update. We jumped into this with four basic goals that are somewhat fundamental. We really needed to create a unified approach to planning and development that is based on the TRPA Regional Plan. Just like down here, up in the basin, there's a regional plan, and we have to conform to it. And actually, the levels of conformance and the level of regulation that we're required to mirror or to adopt is significant. And so we needed to unify our plans in that way. We needed to establish a conformance or a consistency with the TRPA Regional Plan in general. We needed to create a plan that reflects more current economic social realities in a modern and consistent format, and we needed to really focus on implementation, to identify some projects of local and regional interest for future action. So let's go over each one of those real quickly. The first goal. So when, when our plans were first adopted back in the 90s, it was, it was in response to the TRPA's new planning authority, and we developed some joint plans that we adopted with TRPA. But then the county never acted to fully remove the existing zoning designations and some of the existing development standards. As you're familiar with, down here, we have MDS, LDS, general commercial, those types of zoning districts. Even though they didn't really apply up at the lake anymore, we didn't ever actively remove them. So this dual regulatory zone and development standards regime was confusing and frustrating for everyone involved, from staff to the community, to just trying to answer a phone call and give somebody good information. For, for two decades, it's been a frustration. So we determined in this plan to deal with that. And this proposed plan does remove Washoe County's traditional regulatory zones. It establishes one unambiguous standard based on the existing agreement with TRPA. The land uses, in terms of what's allowed on a particular parcel, are almost identical. We'll talk briefly about what some of those changes are in a moment, but let's go on to the next goal. Next goal was to just be more in conformance with the- Next goal was to just be more in conformance with the, uh, regional plan. TRPA adopted a, a new regional plan a few years ago. It has been a while. We've taken quite a while to come into conformance with it. It's not quite like working with, uh, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. The TRPA recognizes that they, uh, deal in an extremely complex and complicated environment. All five jurisdictions, uh, have, have worked diligently to try and figure out what it means to comply with their regional plan and how that works. And so, um, after a few years, we've, uh, we're ready to submit this plan that we feel brings us into conformance with their plan. The, the main things that we needed to do to really move forward in the way that they wanted us to was to adopt TRPA's town centers. These are, these are areas that are really intended to, to focus development. And they have some development incentives that come along with them, including coverage, height and density incentives. So we, we are proposing to adopt those in this plan. The plan conforms with TRPA's regional transportation plan as well. Uh, that's a significant issue with TRPA. Transportation is one of their, their most confounding issues. Uh, it is for every jurisdiction in the basin, for TRPA to, to wrestle with how, how to come up with a basin-wide transportation plan that also represents those local issues is a struggle. And, and so coming into conformance with their regional plan, and, and especially by emphasizing, uh, the, the alternative forms of transportation, uh, is something that this plan does. We're also, uh, conforming with some requirements for greenhouse gas reduction. Uh, TRPA adopted those standards, we're all required to do it. And so, uh, we're doing it, uh, with what we feel are some pretty innovative, uh, strategies to, um, uh, provide a, uh, some real incentives, but to allow developers who are, are looking to take advantage of those incentives to choose from a, a broader variety of, of different standards to choose from, uh, to show that they are, are, uh, trying to, uh, conform with the greenhouse gas reduction strategy. Goal three. So as mentioned, the old plan was adopted back in the nineties, and really, to a large degree, has just not been updated in either content or form. So some of the things that we really needed to look at, and when I'm talking about economic and social realities, uh, it's really more simple than that. I'm sure you remember that the Ponderosa Ranch Amusement Park, uh, used to be, uh, one of the more important features of that region. Uh, I'm sure you know that it hasn't been there for nearly twenty years now, but the existing plan still recognizes it, anticipates it, and assumes that that's what's gonna be there. So making shifts like that was critical, and we made those shifts. Uh, recognizing that memory care and other continuing of care uses are, are just far more important than they used to be, um, that they are a special kind of development that require a, a little bit higher density than we used to recognize, um, uh, that's something that we've incorporated into this plan. And then recognizing this increased demand for alternative transportation and outdoor recreation, um, particularly the multi-use pathways. I'm sure, um, we're all proud of, of the pathway that just opened from Incline down to Sand Harbor. Those types of uses are, are particularly appreciated by, uh, everyone in Washoe County and around the basin. So the, the modern format, no, excuse me, the modern format, um, is still an evolving style. In the master plan that's before you in this, uh, item, we've adopted TRPA's style that's, that's very inviting to the eyes and pleasing, easy to deal with. Uh, the development code format, it is, um, I think, a little more challenging, and we are, uh, looking forward to continuing to work on that format, but, uh, that, that plan does contain all of the, the contemporary changes in, in, uh, approach that, that are needed. The last goal, and maybe even the most important of all these goals for the community, is to try and identify, uh, how to actually implement the plan. I, I don't want to put words in any of the community members' mouths, they're gonna speak for themselves, and they do an excellent job of that. But I, I think that if I were going to frame that, I might say that I, for years, I've been hearing a frustration with, with just planning. And I want to know when Washoe County is gonna identify a project and do it. So, for instance, um, uh, we're making a couple of early commitments here in the plan, um, to try and really let the community know that this isn't a plan to sit on the shelf. So we're trying to make some minimal changes that don't trigger enormous environmental review and slow the plan down for literally years. Uh, but we're committing to identifying changes that we can make in the future, um, and jumping on those on an individual basis to help implement the plan. So some of these commitments that actually show up in the plan under implementation language are a community-wide parking plan, a local transit plan, or transportation and trans, transit plan, an updated set of community design standards. Their community design standards could be said to be from the early nineties and the late eighties, and many people are keen to establish modern design standards. And, and urban forestry strategy, which is something that the TRPA is asking all jurisdictions to do. So, um, the community, I think, is interested in, you know, for instance, the parking plan. We've been talking about that parking plan for a, a decade at least, I think, in meetings that I've been going to. The community brings up that parking is a significant issue. Regardless of what the issue of, of the day might be, comes and issues come and go, parking is a consistent issue. But they're done with talking about it. They don't want to talk about it anymore. They want to see the county move forward with implementation of development of a specific plan for parking that then changes the rules for how that works in the community. And so, um, I think the, the identification of actions to implement the goals and policies might be, um, of, of the most, the most important concept that this plan really tries to, tries to put out there. All of these things are gonna require active participation of the community. We have many local and regional partners that need to be brought together on these. Um, it's a, it's a very interesting and, and complicated process to bring together all of your partners up there and include the community, but, um, it's something that we've committed to do. We've committed to do a better job with community engagement, and we're hoping that these, that the development of these actual parking plans and transit plans and the implementation strategies that we're putting forth in here, we're hoping that through those actions, we can develop these better, better forms of engagement with the community and show them that we really are, are, um, intent on implementing the plan that, that, that we believe they asked for. So I'm gonna stop there and, and, um, allow us to move into a, a question and answer stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young, appreciate it. Thanks for joining us this morning. So with that, I'm gonna jump over to Commissioner Hill, being that this is her district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, since you're on the line, I just have a few questions that I think just need some clarification. On this idea of, um, the county identifying the Incline Village, um, former Incline Village Elementary School as a transit hub, um, can you just give us a little background as to why that was added to the plan? That, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Recently, in the past few months, the issue of, um, the TTD, the Tahoe Transportation District, developing a, what's they call a mobility hub at the former elementary school has become a, a significant issue in the community. And there is a little bit of confusion about how long that has been in allowed use and where, where this concept of a mobility hub comes from. And in, in many parts of the community, there's a sense that, um, it's a new idea. So, uh, maybe we should talk about that briefly. The original plan that was adopted in the nineties, I saw this area as what was called the Incline Village Commercial Community Plan. And it had a list of uses that included a transportation facility like this as, as, as a use that's allowed with a special use permit. So that use, this type of a use, has been permitted with a special use permit from the very original plan. This plan doesn't change that at all. It's, it, that zoning district remains exactly the same. It's called the Incline Village Tourist Zoning District, or, or, I'm sorry, Incline Village Commercial Zoning District. And the list of allowable uses is the same as it always has been, and that use would require a special use permit. I think perhaps what has changed is that the regional transportation plans have begun to emphasize transit, and they've begun to emphasize the concept of mobility hubs. So the regional transportation plan identifies, I think, eighteen or so mobility hubs around the basin, and it identifies two in the Incline Village area. One in the area of the, of the elementary school, and one in the area of the Ponderosa Ranch, the former Ponderosa Ranch. Neither the regional transportation plan, um, nor this plan says that that should happen on any specific parcel. Both plans, the regional plan and our plan, say that a mobility hub is desired in that area. There are goals and policies that identify the concept of a mobility hub being something that's desirable in that zoning district, in that general area, the Incline Village Commercial area. So
Sorry.
Yeah, so, um, that might be what seems new, is that the regional plans have really begun to emphasize these, and, um, they've, they've created a concept called a mobility hub. It's not just a transportation use anymore, it's a, it's a concept. And, um, the Transportation District has been trying to move forward with the, a potential use of this at the elementary school. So I think the community has really been paying a lot of attention to what this plan says about that, and how this plan may or may not support that idea. The plan does support that idea happening in that general area. It does not say it should happen at the school site. And that's something that our plans have said from the onset.
So would it be correct, Mr. Young, to say that we are following the regional plan? Just, just to make it clear for the community to understand that TRPA gives us these guidelines, and we're following their plan? Is that correct? And that's, that's partially why that was added?
It's the whole reason it was added.
Okay, great.
It's the, it's, but it, it, but, and TRPA, if there's a TRPA staff member here, they would, they would, they would agree with this. TRPA is not telling us we are obligated to approve that use there.
Sure, sure. I, I think just for the
This is a, yes.
For the community.
It's a master plan level idea.
Mm-hmm, that, that's helpful to understand, because, um, I think a lot of the concerns I've heard, Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, is that there's a, a frustration from the community that, um, they haven't felt included with the development of the master plan through TRPA, and they haven't felt included with this plan, but this plan sadly, we, or, or just, that's, taking the emotion out of it, is just what we have to follow to be in compliance with that area. So I know there's been a lot of delays on this, um, and some, some opportunities per, perhaps, that we've missed for public comment, but I just wanted to, um, you know, make sure it's clear. And would that also be, um, just to the other public commenters, uh, would that also be highlighted with the special dist, or the special areas such as Tyrolean Village? Um, and there's some other, um, districts as well, that there, those are, we're also following the master plan with those?
Yes, the, the Tyrolean Village, um, the TRPA did apologize to us for that. I don't know that it soothes anybody's irritation, but the amendment that was processed in two thousand and four, I believe it was, to add that special district, um, wasn't communicated to us. So, um, it, it is now, um, but unfortunately, it's one of those things that just because they tell us they didn't do it, doesn't mean they didn't do it. So, um, it's unfortunate, they apologized for it. Uh, we're working, you know, along with, with us working to have better engagement with the community, the development of this plan, um, uh, we've, we've worked very hard to develop a relationship with TRPA that we didn't have before. And I thi, I think that we're getting there, and, um, I don't, I don't expect those kinds of things to ever happen again, um, but they did happen sometimes in the past.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement?
Sure.
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Young, and, um, I appreciate all of the community members who have given us your feedback on this plan, and I understand your frustration. When I was, uh, sat down and, um, given this plan, when I first started, I was like, wait, I've been going to all the community meetings for over a year, and I haven't seen anything about this. So I understand how you feel, and I think that, um, the reason that today I will, um, be voting to approve this plan is because I think that once this plan is approved, there's a lot of opportunities for Washoe County to do some better community planning up in Incline Village, and that's what I asked for, in case anyone missed the early part of the meeting, for staff to get together, see what the cost is, to get a consultant to help us with better transportation planning, to go, um, in line with the TTD transportation planning, looking at traffic studies, looking at parking, um, and looking at the, these community questions. Where, how, how can Washoe County have a better presence up in Incline Village? This includes the police, this includes, um, our, um, our courts, and, um, and opportunities that we can, um, really hear what the community would like to see. So, um, I think that the plan allows us to do that further, um, discovery and, um, look into how we can engage the community and do what's right with the community. And I'm also on the TRPA Board, and I will say that, um, I have my first TRPA meeting tomorrow, um, and, um, I, I want to look into some of these master planning issues that we've had, the regional, how, how we have to comply with the regional plan, and how we can work with TRPA more closely to ensure we don't have these special areas sneak up, and it looks like the county's doing something sneaky, or transportation areas that don't feel like they're in line with the community. So, um, I think that we need to look at this holistically, but, um, that, that is why I will be, um, uh, moving to approve this.
Thank you, Kristina Hill. Kristina Herman, I had you sign in next.
Yes, I, I, I'm glad to hear what Commissioner Hill has to say, um, that makes things look a little better. Uh, she understands that area better than I do. Um, I, I, I really do understand the concerns of the people there. And I, I hope that we have had the meetings that we normally do down here up there and have explained this to them, but, um, what I'm thinking is, so if there is a serious flaw in this, there are ways to correct. Am I right?
Yes, I'm so glad you brought that up. Amendments can be made to the plan, and I think that that's what we need to look at as well. So, um, you know, if we move forward with doing further planning, um, with, um, Incline Village, which I hope the commission will approve to do that, then, then we can look at, um, further amendments down the line with this plan. But getting in conformance with TRPA and making sure that future builds are environmentally sound, and we're, you know, making sure that redevelopment can happen and not pushing this off any longer, that, that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, seeing no other commissioners signed in at this time, and, and we've taken public comment, uh, on this item, um, at this time, I'm looking for a motion. So, Commissioner Hill? Correct. This is a motion on item 11 that has been drafted in the staff report, and there are some options there for Commissioner Hill.
Thank you. My motion is move to adopt the master plan amendment, case number WMPA 19-0007, Tahoe Area Plan, amending the Washoe County Area Plan, Volume Two, Tahoe Area Plan, including changes to the goals, policies, and maps. If adopted, the master amendment will take effect after the determination and conformance with the Tahoe Regional Plan by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and the Regulatory Zoning Amendment Case Number WRZA 19-0007, Tahoe Regulatory Zoning Map, subject to the final approval of the associated master plan amendment and finding of conformance with the 2012 Tahoe Regional Plan to amend the Tahoe Regulatory Zoning Map in order to adopt the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Regulatory Zoning Boundaries. Area Plan, Volume Two. Do I need to talk about full?
You just need to say, establish that the board was able to make the findings.
Okay, and establish that the board was able to make the findings.
And then...
And authorize the chair to sign the two resolutions included as amendments A and B, adopt the amendment to the Tahoe Area Master Plan after a determination of conformance with the Tahoe Regional Plan by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, and amendment to the Tahoe Regulatory Zone Map.
All right, I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Herman. I will, seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your vote on the screen. All right, being that we had a presentation on, so that's item 11, we're on to item 12 now. We had a presentation from our staff member, Mr. Eric Young, in regards to this item. This is the second portion, as he had stated in his presentation about the adoption of the area plan modifiers. I don't see there is a need for another, another presentation from staff, but I will have, Madam Clerk, will you please give us a ordinance number, please? Since this is a second reading?
Yes, second reading, this is ordinance number 1662, and ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 Development Code, replacing Article 220 Tahoe Area Plan modifiers with two new articles. Article 220 Tahoe Area Plan modifiers and Article 220.1 Tahoe Area Design Standards. These amendments are meant to ensure the express conformance of Washoe County's plans with the 2012 Regional Plan adopted by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, TRPA, and are generally not intended to increase densities or intensities beyond what is currently permitted by the regional plan. The changes would include, but are not limited to, the following. Adopting the TRPA's permissible use set forth in TRPA Regional Plan, Chapter 21, Permissible Uses, in lieu of Washoe County's Allowed Uses set forth in Article 302 of the Washoe County Development Code, adopting design standards that are in conformance with the requirements set forth in the TRPA Regional Plan, Chapter 13, Area Plans, and Chapter 36, Design Standards, adopting development standards that are consistent with the development standards set forth in the TRPA Regional Plan, adopting neighborhood plans utilizing the boundaries and allowed uses of TRPA's Plan, Area Statements, and community plan in lieu of Washoe County's Regulatory Zones set forth in Article 106 of the Washoe County Development Code, and including the Washoe County Planning Commission's direction to expand the available density incentive from only memory care only to all residential care and nursing care uses and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. This was formerly Bill Number 1835.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we will open the public hearing on this. This was Bill Number 1835. The first reading was on March 30th, I mean, March 20th, correct? Or March 10th, 2020, last year. And so this is the second reading and not possible adoption. Do we have any public comment signed in on this item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I see nobody signed in.
All right. Do we have anybody on Zoom? We do have somebody on Zoom. All right. All right, Ms. Grant, this is the public hearing for the second reading for the Development Code for the Tahoe Area Plan. Floor is yours, ma'am.
No, I hit the button early. I'm waiting for general public comment.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get you on the general public comment. Thank you. All right, seeing no further comment on the Tahoe Area Plan at this time, and we'll bring it back to the board. Kristina Hill?
I move to adopt ordinance 1662. Do I need to add anything else to that motion?
Just to set the effective date.
Set the effective date to?
April 15th.
April 15th. Thank you. 2020, 2021.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 1662, and set the effective date for April 15th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Please place your votes on your screens and affirm your vote. Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, they are, we will, that concludes all of our public hearings, folks, and we are on to our final public comment. So, Mr. Manager, item 13, sir.
Item 13 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk?
It looks like we have some people signed in that were in chambers, but it looks maybe they've just left.
Okay.
Ms. Suzie Howell?
All right, Ms. Howell. Ms. Suzie Howell.
Ms. Cindy Martinez?
Welcome back, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, commissioners. This has been a very interesting meeting to listen to. I was appreciative to hear your back and forth and discussion, particularly of the two items that are for resolutions, adopting the things you just talked about, 11 and 12. So that gives me a bit of frame and reference to respond to you, Chair Lucy. I listened to you very carefully when you explained why you did not put Commissioner Herman's resolution on the agenda. And I think what I'm troubled by is I understand what you said, and I appreciate what your jurisdictional concerns are, but I don't know if you realize that you unwittingly painted yourself into a corner. Because by declining to put the resolution on the agenda for open discussion, whether the outcome would be what we're looking for or not, what you've now done, as you've demonstrated, at least from my perspective, is you've made a decision on what the county is going to talk about, what the people can participate in, which is not much different from what our governor has done. And that's unfortunate. So I would ask you to reconsider that, and perhaps let's put this resolution on the agenda for discussion. If you're talking about these kinds of things, at least we could have subject matter experts who may come and speak for three minutes and offer a countervailing opinion. And the other thing that I think I'm troubled by is that seems to be perceived as an oversimplification that we're just tired of wearing masks. I think, for me at least, it's symbolic of being muzzled. And I think probably the only good thing I have about wearing the mask is that I've saved a lot of money on lipstick. So, I mean, there's good stuff right there. But it's not just about wearing masks, and I'm sure that all of you go to fast food restaurants, regular restaurants, dry cleaners, you use all kinds of vendors in your daily life. So you're encountering the same people that we do when we go out and we do business. And by the reduction of business, revenues have been driven down, casino revenues are driven down, we are facing an economic crash that's going to overcome, and it's going to eclipse that of the Great Recession. I worked on furloughs for five years during the Great Recession when I worked for the board. And I think that it's important to open our businesses up because we're missing the revenues that we need going forward for these things that you're talking about today. That stuff costs money. If people don't have jobs, we don't have businesses, they don't pay taxes, you don't have revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez.
Ms. Denise Davis.
Ms. Denise Davis, yes. Welcome, Ms. Davis.
Hi, Denise Davis, resident of Incline Village. I don't speak for the entire community, I just speak for me. It saddens me that I sit here, time after time, and the Incline community is always portrayed as no. Anything that's proposed is no, we don't want it, we don't like it, make it go away. I would just say to you, for an example, that our Tahoe Area Plan, I personally started going to meetings in December of 2019, and then COVID came, and then nothing. And then suddenly, a week or two ago, the Tahoe Area Plan is back on the agenda. So when you get this pushback from us, a lot of it is this, we have no idea any of this is coming, and then all of a sudden, here we are. We feel we don't have time to review it, we don't have time to find out information, and we're just frustrated. I personally have talked to several county employees. They're very helpful, they're very polite, and so this confrontational attitude that we have between our county and Incline Village in Crystal Bay, I just think could be helped with some communication. I mean, we would like to move forward on things, you would like to move forward on things, and we would all, we're all going to the same goal. So I just want to say, I think we have some communication to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
And now Ms. Anne Marie Grant on Zoom.
All right, Ms. Grant? Ms. Grant, are you there?
Yep, sorry, Anne Marie Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy. My brother was 38 years old when he had a mental health crisis at the Peppa Mill Casino and simply asked for help, Reno PD's idea of helping. My brother was to put him in a hog tie for 40 minutes. Forty minutes is longer than some of the meetings you all hold. They then dumped him up to jail, and he was affixiated while hog tied. Sheriff Balaam on the 21st released a press release that he's reestablishing the Major Case Review Board. I call it a smoke and mirror screen show. So I would urge that any reports or determinations that get discussed at that board, that the county commissioners be privy to it, as you do have a duty under NRS 211.020 that I'm sure you should all know by heart by now. So I'd like to see you look into that, what's going on with that board, what information you can obtain from it, as I think, like I said, you should be privy to that. And like I said, I also would like you to, next year, think about the budget for the sheriff's office, $123 million. Out of your, what, $433 million went to the sheriff's office? And then they're getting all these grants and all these deputies working overtime, making $100,000-plus dollars a year. I'm not okay with that, and neither should your constituents be. I'll leave you with my brother being affixed at the jail. If I have to hear it every day of my life, so should you. After my brother was affixed to death, they closed the door and congratulated themselves on a great job. Imagine how terrified my poor brother was, mentally ill in a mental health crisis, and then tortured to death, tortured to death. You wonder why I call every meeting, why I'm upset and angry. Have a good day.
All right, do we have any further public comment?
Nobody else has signed in.
All right, do we have anybody else on Zoom? All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. It is item 14, Mr. Manager.
Item 14 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything further from any of the commissioners? Kristina Herman? Come on, once, Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Young, do you have anything final?
No, thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further, we are adjourned, everybody. Thank you very much for coming.